Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the February meeting of Leeds City Council Executive Board. I'd like to start by, first of all, reminding everybody that this meeting is webcast live, and welcome anybody watching us online. This is the first executive board meeting for Ed Whiting as our chief executive, so we'll all try and be gentle with you this meeting, Ed. And I'll move on to the formal items at the start of the agenda. So are there any appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, please?
Thanks, Chair. To confirm, no appeals have been received for today's meeting.
Thank you. Could you update us on the exempt information, please?
Sure, Chair, thanks. Appendix B to item 14, which is capital receipts programme update, and appendix one to item 15, which is regarding the development of the Old Coburn Sports Hall, both being designated as being exempt from publication under Access to Information Procedure Rule 10.43, and should the board be agreeable, these appendices would be considered in private at the conclusion of the public part of the meeting.
Thank you. I shall turn to the next item, which is late items, please.
Thanks, Chair. With your agreement, a report entitled 'Delays to plans for new hospital provision in Leeds' has been admitted to the agenda as a late item of business and agenda item six, and also, in terms of supplementary information, this has been circulated to board members for inclusion within agenda item 12a, a report on the 2526 revenue budget and council tax, which provides the board with updated information following receipt of the final local government final settlement for 2526.
Thank you. I shall turn to the board and see if there's any declarations of interest. councillor Lam, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just the customary drawing of the board's attention to my membership of the West Yorkshire Combined Authority Board in relation to item seven.
Thank you, councillor Lam, and I have the same interest as well. So if there's no further declarations of interest from the board, I'll move to item five, which is a minute, and check that everybody's happy with the minutes from December 2024 meeting. Councillor Lam? Okay, councillor Lam is happy with the minutes, and I take it everybody else is happy with the minutes. That's great. We'll move on to the substantive papers, and the first one is a late item around the delays to plans for a new hospital provision in Leeds, and I welcome Jenny Erhart, the Director of Finance from Leeds Teaching Hospitals Trust, who has joined us as part of our close working with the trust on this work. I'm going to invite councillor Venna to introduce the paper, then invite Jenny to come in, and then invite Ed Whiting to come in. So councillor Venna, please.
Thank you, Chair. This paper is about the announcement of the funding of the new hospitals programme and our response to that as a city. The government has announced five waves of funding, with the build at the LGI being in wave two, which is 2030 to 35. Wave one is hospitals partially or wholly built of RAC and those that had already commenced building. It is disappointing that our build will not start at the moment until after 2030. We, as a councillor, taking this very seriously, along with our partners, which is why I've brought this paper to executive board. One of the recommendations of the paper is that we write another submission to the government about the importance of this build, to try and bring forward funding at an earlier point, for example, if there are underspends in wave one. It is also important that we continue with the cross-sectoral work that has already started around the innovation village to enable this to continue to develop before the LGI build commences. LTHT and partners, including us, are already progressing funded projects, such as the development of the Old Medical School into a hub for health tech innovation. As outlined in the paper, the revised timetable for the hospital build will not impact many of the innovations already in development, and the time before the build can be spent productively to support the regeneration of the area. Chair, I will leave my comments there and hand over to Jenny.
Thank you. Jenny, please.
Thank you, thank you. And as I've been introduced, Jenny Erhart, I'm the Director of Finance for Leeds Teaching Hospitals and the executive senior responsible officer for this programme, which is why I'm here, on behalf of the trust. As we know, the scheme's been in planning for around, well, for over eight years now. We were announced as a priority back in 2019 in a pre-new hospitals programme arrangement. We have had prime ministerial visits to the site. There's been something of a hiatus, I would say, as the new hospitals programme was set up and developed, and we've remained quoted by others, as well as by ourselves, as one of the most developed schemes in the new hospitals programme throughout that time. We've spent a lot of effort and time being really close with the new hospitals programme and really engaging with them, trying to make sure that our scheme was seen to be and was, you know, as well developed in their eyes as it is in ours. Clearly, as councillor Venna said, we are extremely disappointed with the announcement. It's not where we want it to be. You know, that sort of further length of time before we get building is a disappointment to our whole organisation, I would say. We're working now at a senior level within the organisation on the sort of what next? You know, what does our strategy look like in our clinical services strategy? That feels really appropriate, given the amount of time we've been in development. You know, healthcare has moved on, our communities have moved on. However, I don't think that's going to make an enormous change. I'm not sort of seeing an enormous change in terms of the scheme itself. And we're working really closely with the new hospitals programme on how do we see that path to build, and what can they support in terms of keeping us going and making sure that we are absolutely ready to go when the funding is in place. It's clear that the government's economic growth strategy, I suppose, is one of the key things that we need to link into. And from, you know, the innovation village, as has been mentioned, is clearly something that we can keep going, perhaps not on quite the same scale as if we had a cleared site where the Clarendon Wing currently is, but actually there are many things that we can keep going in that interim, and I think it's really important that we do. We have seen some other schemes, again publicly in the media, where they've made that argument about innovation and growth have been able to continue to some degree, not in terms of getting the full hospital rebuild in the time that they really wanted, but actually being announced that they've got tens of millions of pounds in support for that sort of innovation and growth angle. Clearly, the Old Medical School is already, as has been said, in development, and we absolutely continue with that and see that as a forerunner really, and a, you know, a key element of what we will be able to do on that site in the fullness of time. From a resource perspective, we have this week submitted quite a long list of items to the new hospitals programme to say, these are the things that we can keep doing, that we should keep doing, so that our site is ready. You know, lots of kind of big infrastructure-type things around services and utilities and so on. And we've also asked of the new hospitals programme, you know, support for all the implications of the announcement, in a sense. So there's, you know, lots of ramifications of that announcement. From a risk perspective, we have a number of risks that we had mitigated through the new build, and we're in that process now of reviewing those risks and saying, you know, so what is the mitigation now, and what can we continue to carry as a risk, and what do we need to mitigate sooner? And where there's cost relating to that, then again, we'll be going back to the new hospital programme to say, this is an implication of the decision, and therefore we will ask for support for those. It still feels quite new news, so there isn't a kind of, you know, beautifully described strategy that I can share with you, or much feedback from the new hospitals programme, but that's our intention. So happy to take any questions on the paper, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring Ed in, please.
Thanks, Leader. And thank you, Jenny. Also, I want to thank Tony Cook for the work on drafting this paper together. We're working really closely with Jenny and the team, and I think it's worth saying, this is what partnership is in this city. It's how you work through challenges, as well as good stuff, too, and we're in with you on that, Jenny. Just a few points to echo what councillor Venna said. This new hospital site is critical both for the health services it offers our city, as well as the innovation opportunity to bring both new ideas, thinking, and tools and techniques in. We have seen over the recent years, the world has continued to change around us. We're looking at, you know, the mass transit programme developing well, university partner plans, new vice-chancellor at Leeds University, Leeds Beckett, doing all sorts of things, an industrial strategy from central government that is talking a lot about medtech and med devices and all sorts of other areas that we're interested in. That's important, because both of what we can do now, and Jenny was right to say, we achieve that scale in stages, as the new hospital will eventually be built, but what can we do before that build starts? I think there are real opportunities, and they're different to the opportunities we saw, say, two or three years ago. On the discussion we would like to have with the HSE and the NHS as we go, it is about the positioning this project through wave one and beyond, so that, you know, the sense of this project being ready to go and ready to take any opportunity that arises over coming years, months, and so on, that really is where we need to be. It's where we are as a partnership, but I think it's really important to say for today, this is about positioning and making sure our case is really clear. And then to be absolutely clear in closing, this is the opportunity to look at where there are areas we can go further and faster, and where we can sort of think again with where partners are at, where other schemes are at, and, you know, honestly, I'm quite optimistic about what we can get out of that as well. So really grateful for the chance to have to take stock with this group.
Thanks, Ed. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you particularly to Jenny for coming and giving that explanation, and I won't start by saying how desperately sorry I am for you and your team, for everybody at the hospital, and for the city, that this decision has been made, and this is the position that we're in. There's nothing in the recommendations here that can't be supported, but my view is we're being too timid and too nice. If this was Manchester, Andy Burnham would have been on the six o'clock news berating the government to reverse this decision and banging down the door to Downing Street. And I was extremely disappointed the mayor didn't want to talk about it at the last Waikia board meeting. And while, I mean, it's the wrong wording to say I welcome the fact we're having a paper, I do not welcome the fact we're having to even talk about this. The paper should be talking about celebrating the new hospital coming to Leeds and all the opportunities in the innovation that goes with it. So I think we need to find our voice. I think this is a timid first step in the response that we need to take, but there needs to be more. I'd like a commitment from the leader that there will be an opportunity ASAP for all members of council to discuss this in public, whether that's a special council meeting or some other forum. I'm perfectly relaxed about that, but this is too important for me being the only opposition member to speak up on behalf of the people of Leeds on this issue. I know it's gone to scrutiny, I know it will go to Health and Wellbeing Board. This is too important for the whole council not to have the opportunity to discuss it. If I could just go through, and if Jenny could confirm that I have this right, what the implications of the decision from government are? So if I've understood correctly, the delay effectively means no development until 2030 at the earliest. The 2020 consultation would have to be repeated and rerun. The letter indicates that the earliest building start will be 2033 to 2035. The Children's Hospital would not be open until 2040 at the earliest. That the delay will mean the costs will increase just of the build by £800 million between now and then. It will mean the scheme has to be redesigned. It will mean maternity and neonatal units cannot be separated for another decade. You've referred to the medical school site. We can't sit with a derelict site or semi-derelict site, so there needs to be a way forward for that. Because this is not just about a physical new building, it's about space and capacity, and to be able to continue to function and operate for whatever the period is, we're looking at 10 to 15 years before we see the new build open, you would have to create capacity by moving other services elsewhere. There's a crumbling estate with a huge backlog of maintenance that needs to be managed for 10 to 15 years. How much is that going to cost, and what impact is that going to have on LTHT's capacity to deliver services? The ramifications of this are enormous, and it's important to say this is a political decision. And the big disappointment is, you would think we didn't have a line into government, but our former chief executive is now the most senior civil servant in the NHS. The Chancellor of the Exchequer is a Leeds MP, and we have another Leeds MP who's a member of the Cabinet. And I think it is absolutely appalling that they have sold Leeds down the river. And as I said at the start, I don't expect Jenny to answer the political points, politicians can do that. This shouldn't be where we are at all. Leeds needs this, not just for the healthcare that it provides, not just for the staff and the patients that need it, but the economic impact. If the mission of the government is growth, this is one of the most significant things you could do in Leeds and this region to promote growth. And it is a political decision to stop it, nothing else. And as I said, Leader, we need you to find your voice on this one. We're a full square behind you, but as I say, the recommendations are too timid for my liking. I think we need to go much further in what we're going to do to lobby government to reverse this decision.
Thank you, councillor Lam, and I welcome your support to cross-party working. I'll ask Jenny to come back on the questions I think are appropriate for, and on behalf of the Teaching Hospitals Trust, and then we'll come back to the other issues. So Jenny, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So I think I noted all your comments, councillor Lam, but please correct me if I missed anything. No building until 2030, so that's the piece of work that we're working with the new hospitals programme on, is how do we make sure we're absolutely ready? We don't have a commitment to continue funding for it from them, but we're pushing very hard to say, actually, we need to see continued development on this site, and there are things that are useful to do to make the site ready for that build. So I don't think we will see nothing on the site, but I haven't got, you know, a decision from the new hospitals programme, but we're absolutely pushing hard for that. The consultation being rerun, again, I don't think that's something we will need to do. My understanding is that that will stand. The letter does say 2033 to 35 build, but again, that's where we're pushing the new hospitals programme to say we need to go sooner than that. And how do we, a conversation I had with them yesterday afternoon, you know, where can we slip in where there's that slippage? So the schemes that are ahead of us in wave one, some of those are not very well developed at this stage, just because of where they started from. It's not a criticism, it's just a timing issue. Therefore, I do think there's going to be slippage in wave one. So how can we sort of take advantage of that slippage to best effect for Leeds is absolutely something that we will be keeping very alive. The opening, you know, yes, that date, you know, we couldn't really comment on really. You know, if the build starts in 2033, then it's probably a five or six-year build, and that's the sort of timeframe. The £800 million is the number we've calculated in terms of what's the scale of delay since it was first announced, so not only relating to this announcement, but since it was first announced as a priority. The backlog in the existing buildings is one of the highest in the NHS, and it's above £600 million in terms of correcting all of that. So that's, you know, a key issue for us, and because of the way the ICS now works, if you like, it's a problem for West Yorkshire as a whole, not only for Leeds. So yeah, that's absolutely something that, again, we put into new hospitals programme, but without a kind of answer of, yes, here's some money, as yet. The redesign, the thing I said earlier about sort of taking a step back and making sure we've got our strategies right, our clinical service strategy in particular, will have an impact on the design itself in any case, and that'll be our, you know, something that we make a decision on. But the purpose of the new hospitals programme, to some degree, was about standardisation. And because our design was done before that standardisation design was shared nationally, our design does not, as it's currently drawn, does not comply with what they call hospital 2.0, which is a standardised design the new hospitals programme is developing. We have offered to work very closely with them, because some of our services, tertiary services, need specific designs that we wouldn't see in every one of the new hospitals, but that will change the design in any case. So yes, there will be a redesign, but it's driven by a number of things, including our own strategies, but also that desire for standardisation nationally. And the centralisation of maternity and neonates, that was one of the key drivers clearly in the original business case, and that is something that we're looking to bring forward. And how do we manage to bring that forward is part of those conversations, but that's not agreed within the organisation yet. We've got to work through that and what the implications of that are, but that's absolutely something that we're paying attention to now. The thing I would say about the Old Medical School is, we are in legal agreement about the sale of that, so it won't remain derelict. The work is ongoing to, well, it isn't derelict now, I should say, it won't be derelict, because the work is ongoing to make sure that it's redeveloped and filled appropriately. So I think I've covered off the questions from my perspective there.
Thank you, Jenny. Councillor Venna, please.
Thank you. I'll...
Sorry, Fiona, I'll just ask councillor Lam to come back on to, one question for Jenny, please.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Thank you for that, Jenny. There was just, there was a bit about having to create capacity by moving services elsewhere.
So we need, again, we need to take that away and work through that in a lot of detail. There are opportunities on some of our other sites for some capacity, and there is, you know, there's already some work ongoing about how we could generate that. But what we're really keen to do and will do within the work that we're doing now is pay attention to health inequalities and make sure we improve sort of the, or reduce the health inequality gaps that we see. But also that if we do move services, that it makes sense both from a patient and population perspective and from a clinical perspective. So, you know, it'll be done for the right reasons in terms of needing to create that capacity elsewhere, if we do that.
Thank you, Jenny. Councillor Venna, please.
Thank you, Leader. I'll respond to the more political points. So councillor Lam, you can't credibly blame six months of a Labour government for the state of either LGI or the wider NHS. The DARZ report was so clear that the last 14 years represents massive disinvestment in the NHS, not only in revenue, and in revenue it's probably been most devastating in primary care, but in estates. And the National Hospitals Programme hasn't stopped, as you suggested when you were speaking. It never really started. Only one hospital has been built of the 40 that were promised in 2019, and there was a precursor programme before that, which is where Jenny referred to this having been eight years. Regarding members having the opportunity to discuss this, I've already suggested that we do this as a Health and Wellbeing Board, because the advantage of a Health and Wellbeing Board is that all our partners are there. Opposition councillors are already represented, but we could invite all the parties to put someone forward who could speak. This has to be responded to as a health and care partnership. A full, a council meeting is us talking to each other without our partners being there, which is why I think this is best addressed through the Health and Wellbeing Board, where LTHT and other senior leaders in the health and care system are there. Regarding your response that the paper is a timid response, we will continue to make the case to government as we have since 2019. Not only will we keep making the case, but so will our partners, LTHT and other organisations in the health and care system. We are united as a city in wanting this hospital to be built as soon as possible and to the highest quality. As I said when I was speaking, the hospitals in wave one are the hospitals which are wholly or partially built of RAC. That's why we're not in wave one, we're in wave two. We also recognise that our government has been in power for six months, inherited a crumbling NHS estate, a black hole in the economy, a broken public sector, and competing economic priorities, and it's in that context we will continue to lobby to expediate the funding being brought forward. For example, if there are underspends in wave one, and Jenny's outlined how that might happen, because other schemes are not as developed as ours, and we will continue to work on the innovation and regeneration and development work we can still do until we're able to start building. Thank you.
Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you. If I can come back on a few of those points. So I'll save the ding-dong about whose fault it is and who did what. I will absolutely accept there is blame to be put on the last Conservative government on this one, which I certainly would support on that. The point I would make is, had exactly the same announcement been made in exactly the same way 12 months earlier by the previous government, the tone of this executive board would have been very different. Your tone would have been very different, councillor Venna. The simple fact, whatever happened before July last year, it was a political decision by the current incumbents of the Treasury and the Health Service to deny Leeds this hospital, having committed to do the exact opposite in their leaflets beforehand, and that is a disgrace. When it comes to the Health and Wellbeing Board, as I said in my opening remarks, that should be going ahead, absolutely. But with the greatest of respect to all our partners, they are not elected to their roles to represent people. It's crucial that we engage with them, it's not either/or, we should be doing both. But the people who are elected by all of the people of this city should have an opportunity to talk about this issue, to raise their concerns, and to join the lobbying efforts. And I'll repeat what I started with. If this was Manchester, Andy Burnham would have been banging the drum loud and clear, being nice, having discussions, being disappointed, is not going to get us our new hospital. We need to be loud, clear, speak with one voice, and we're absolutely up for that across party, but it also needs this administration to show its spine and find its voice, and absolutely bang that drum loud and clear.
Councillor Venna, please.
Yeah, I just want to be really, really, really clear, that as a city, we are absolutely speaking with one voice. We are completely united behind our partners at LTHT on the need for this hospital, and I expressed my disappointment when I first started speaking, that the money is that we're not part of wave one. But the point, I want to also reiterate a point, that alongside the black hole in the economy, another thing our government discovered when we came to power is that the money for the National Hospitals Programme was never there, which is why one hospital was only built of the 40 that were promised. So when West Streeting announced the review of the National Hospitals Programme, it was so that the programme could be put on a sustainable footing, which has now happened with funding committed to the five different waves. What we need to ensure is that we are at the front of wave two, or if there are underspends in wave one, we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Venna. Councillor Lam?
So my frustration, you're seeking to justify the unjustifiable here. The new government have managed to find £18 billion for Mauritius, but they can't find the money for a new hospital in Leeds. I think that's a government that's got their priorities wrong. And the black holes, the justifications, there is no justification for this. Rachel Reeves campaigned for this. She's in the pamphlet that sets out the case for why we should be doing this in Leeds, and it's not good enough for us to say we want to make sure we're at the front of wave two. That's throwing up the white flag and making a surrender. We should be saying, we should be in wave one, and you need to change your minds. That's it, that should be our position.
And I think I heard councillor Venna say that's what we're pushing for in terms of aiming to get into the programme. Let's be absolutely clear about this. Our approach is to work with the government. I've already spoken to the secretaries of state and ministers about this, I'm sure other people have as well. We're going to work with the Teaching Hospitals Trust on putting together the best case around what we can deliver, why it's needed, and how it can be afforded, and to work constructively in bringing this forward. In terms of raising our voice, I'm sure people that listen to and watch local media would have seen myself and councillor Venna out arguing the case in the local media around this as well. And I do welcome your commitment to continue to work with us on a cross-party basis to make sure this is moving forward. I think the important thing on this that's come forward from what Jenny has said and councillor Venna has said, is that there is more work to do on putting forward a new programme, and that's what we will do. I am absolutely convinced this won't be the last update we'll get to executive board, and we will, when we have a clearer set of steps forward, we'll come back with a clearer programme about how we as a council can support the Teaching Hospitals Trust in moving this forward. And I'm really pleased that we're able to do that, given the fact that we're just hugely disappointed about the fact that a hospital was promised many years ago, and political decisions were made before about this, and we can, you know, we can all go round and say who said what in the past, and I'm sure, you know, I'm sure we can all get lists of who said what in the past, but I think that approach, I'll be absolutely clear, nobody here is saying we do not need a new hospital in Leeds, and I hope that's coming across very clearly, councillor Lam. We do need a proper approach to move forwards on this, in terms of what our vision and direction is. Like I say, this paper isn't one that's come to executive board, and that's the last we'll hear of it forever. We have committed in the recommendation... we'll hear of it forever. We have committed in the recommendations to that partnership working and to that continued lobbying of government about taking this forward, and I look forward to working with you and the other councillors on that. I'd like to come back again councillor Lam.
It's just, I mean councillor Venna isn't keen to go to all councillors, but I really do think it's important that there's an opportunity for all members to contribute to this debate.
Okay, let's have a look at that, we'll ask Whips to have a look at that in the usual, in, in, in the usual way. I think, you know, we do have a programme of full council meetings that all councillors are at, that all groups have the opportunity to bring items to, so let's, I'm sure Whips can look at that. Okay. If nobody else wants to come in on this item, that's great, I'll turn to the recommendations, which are in the, in the late paper that's arrived, and ask the board about those recommendations, is everybody supportive of those? That's great, thank you. And we'll move on to item seven, and councillor Prior please.
Thank you leader. So this is the request for consent and agreement on combined authorities' Adult Education Functions Amendment Order 2025, which I'm sure will garner the same debate as the previous item. So in 2024, new types of technical qualifications were approved by the Institute for Apprenticeships and Technical Education for delivery in 2025. These are funded nationally as part of the Apprenticeships Skills Children and Learning Act 2009. So to enable combined authorities to use their adult skills fund budget to fund these new qualifications from 2025, the government will need to transfer this funding power to them via statutory instrument. And in order for it to progress, the DFE need to provide consent from each, from the combined authority and each of its constituent councils for the order to be made. And this exact wallpaper allows that. I shall leave it there for introductory remarks.
Thank you councillor Prior. Are there any comments? Councillor Lam please.
Just simply to say that having supported it at the Waikia Board, it would be rather silly if I didn't do the same here, so yeah, happy to support.
Thank you. I take it everybody else on the board is happy with the paper? That's great, and we'll move on to item eight, please councillor Lennox.
Thank you leader. So this report aims to update the executive board on the current housing pressures in Leeds and the outcomes of the recent consultation on our lettings policy, which was approved at December 2023, executive board. It seeks approval for proposed changes to the lettings policy to better address the increased demand for social housing in our city. Housing in Leeds is at, demand for housing in Leeds is at an all-time high. At the end of the 24/25 quarter two, there were 28,677 households on the Leeds Homes Register, 19% of them were in urgent housing need, which was Band A and Band A plus. The number of households in temporary accommodation continues to rise, with 506 households being accommodated in January 2025. These figures reflect the housing situation nationally. While Leeds has an excellent track record of preventing homelessness, the pressures on the service mean that the average waiting time for applicants in Band A for general needs accommodation now stands at three years. So the changes proposed to our lettings policy are, we permanently remove the date of registration and tenant transfer quotas and allocate properties on the basis of housing need, removing applicants from the register who, who have income, savings or assets of over 60,000, or who own a residential property that could be sold, removing applicants who haven't lived in Leeds as their main residence for two years or don't have a strong connection to Leeds, restricting which adult household members can be added to a housing application to be rehoused, removing applicants in Band D of the register, no longer awarding priority to applicants with dependent children to move out of high-rise accommodation, increasing the priority award period to 365 days, creating a new direct let category for homeless customers in temporary accommodation. These changes have been subject to really broad public consultation running from January to March 2024. This consultation was received, sorry, this consultation received nearly 3,000 responses and a full analysis of the outcomes can be found in the appendix one of the report. It's also been to the Communities Housing and Environment Scrutiny Board twice, as well as the Homelessness Prevention Forum and the Housing Support Providers Forum both last year. The proposed changes to the lettings policy aim to improve the management of the Leeds Homes Register and the allocation of council homes, and there will be a greater focus on meeting the housing need that I've explained earlier and reducing the use of temporary accommodation.
Thank you councillor Lennox. Councillor Lam please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I think as local members, I'm sure others will feel the same, the hardest cases to deal with are those when you've got people in desperate housing need, and their desperate need meets the reality of the, the situation that we're in, and they're some of the most heartbreaking and difficult families to, to work with and support. We, we all, we all have to do that. So, I fully understand the rationale behind this and the direction of travel broadly. I think none of us like to be in a position where this is what needs to be done, but it is, and I think it's the right thing to do. A couple of points I would make, around the 60,000 mark that would govern whether someone's on, on the list or not. I, I can see why it's there, there's just a concern it's a bit of a cliff edge, and if we've considered any other sort of phasing approaches, because for some people, we will all find ourselves with, where someone is just the wrong side of, of the line, that otherwise you would, you would put them on, on the list. So, that, that's one thing to look at. I think it would be sensible, if you're agreeable, to bring it back to exec board, maybe in six months after implementation, just so we can see how it's going. You can make an argument for going a bit further and looking at Band C, but again, you'd want to see the impact, I think the approach is right. And then just, can you update us on any plans to do a similar review of the local lettings policy? Because again, for me, that's something that causes an issue where you, you find people, because they're in desperate housing need, perhaps get placed in, for all the right reasons, in a part of the city or communities where they're going to struggle to fit in for a whole variety of reasons. And again, I'm pretty sure we all experience that, it's not that any of the people are bad people, but it creates a conflict, and within the local lettings policy, I think there's more things that we can do. I appreciate that it's not for today, but it'd be good to know if there's some plans coming forward to look at that as well.
Thank you. Councillor Lennox please.
Thank you. Just briefly, on the local lettings policy, we have suggested that we will start to review that after this, after we've done implementation of this, and I'm happy to bring back an update regarding how we implement this. Regarding Band C, that was proposed in these measures, and it was proposed when we, when we initially went out to do the consultation last year. A combination of feedback from members and the public meant that we took the Band C recommendation out of this report. And the, the point, the point on that is that actually we do see people on Band C being allocated properties, so it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you are, it does contribute to the, to the churn is a, is a, not a nice word to use when we're talking about people's homes, but in terms of the churn of the list, of people moving through, moving to more appropriate properties, Band C does enable us to, to allocate some properties that are more suitable for people, and enables us to free up maybe bigger houses for families, et cetera. So Band C remains in the list. And regarding the £60,000, I'll let Mandy come back in a minute with a bit of detail about how that was arrived at. But we have to, if, if we're taking a decision that, that housing, public housing is, social housing is for people in housing need, and we take a decision that people do have a, who have a level of means that they can afford to, whether it's privately rent, or look to buy, or find other kinds of housing that they can afford to do, and we have to put a, put a, you know, a marker somewhere on that. So, I'll let Mandy discuss further how we arrived at that. But I do take your point that, that not everybody's situation is the same, and, and £60,000 is not the same for, for one family as it might be for another, which is why that there is still other measures that go around that to assess people's housing need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy please.
Okay, so in arriving at the 60k figure, we considered the Strategic Housing Market Assessment, which was undertaken in 2023, and in that assessment, it identified that for a market rent to be affordable, that someone would have to have a household income of 57,000. So in arriving at the 60k, that was the evidence that we used to determine that. I think, as councillor Lennox says, there are a number of exemptions that are available as part of that, so we would consider other factors that might contribute. So, yes, there does need to be kind of a cutoff point, but we would look at exemptions around certain characteristics to ensure that we're not discriminating against any families.
Thank you. Councillor Lam please.
Yeah, just one quick follow-up for me, so, well, that's good to hear, so I'm pleased about that. Will, is the 60,000 a fixed number, or will that go up over time, and what's it linked to?
I think the detail of that will follow on from this paper, so from this paper, one of the recommendations is that we'll work up the detail of the policy. It will probably be looked at incrementally, increased, taking into account inflation, but the detail of that we haven't yet determined. We are sort of checking what other local authorities have done, a number of other local authorities have pitched at similar levels, so we'll, we'll see what learning there is from those authorities in terms of inflationary increases.
Thank you Mandy. Okay, I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 39 and see if the board are happy with those recommendations, I can see everybody is, that's great, thank you. Thank you councillor Lennox, we'll move on to councillor Arif on item nine please.
Thank you Chair. Assisted Living Leeds is a service that has two main roles, a 24/7 telecare service and providing equipment to enable people to live at home. This service, leads, equipment and telecare is a key aspect of the delivery of prevention and independent support in Leeds. It moved into assisted living Leeds in 2015 and has been a hub for the storage and delivery of equipment to people across the whole of Leeds, supporting hospital discharge and people to live a good life in their own home. The building also houses the essential telecare services, which is a lifeline to 18,000 adults across Leeds, providing a response service that helps people after falling in their own home, reduces the need for ambulance calls and admissions to hospital, as well as providing assurance and peace of mind to many older people in their lifetime. The current site, Assisted Living Leeds operates from and now requires some significant maintenance works, and the service has largely outgrown the building. The new building will provide an opportunity to review the, the way the service operates, providing additional service, efficiency and increasing their ability to store equipment and clean and recycle more equipment, serving more people effectively across Leeds. This particular report asks execs, exec board to approve an additional 3.4 million, taking the overall budget to 9 million, following approval in 2019, of 5.6 million for the acquisition of the new building at Waterside Road in Sterton. A recent tender process has resulted in an affordable bid, which can be managed within the 9 million allocated in the capital programme. In terms of the key tag programme dates, our contract award is by the end of March 25, site mobilisation in April, start on site by May and hopefully completion by January 2026. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Councillor Lam please.
Yep, thank you. I broadly support the, the paper, it seems eminently sensible, these kind of services are absolutely vital to try and help keep the pressure off the NHS and, and have people in the, the right settings. A location is challenging for anything like this, it's a balance between what's available at the right price and so on, and I suppose this, this location is a bit of a compromise in some ways. The, the, the attraction for staff feedback, I understand, is the, the amount of parking that's available for it, but the concern is the access to public transport and what we're doing to make sure it isn't somewhere that people might become isolated from their family, and, and I appreciate it's, it's a tricky balance to strike, and I think you've probably got the right one, but it would be just useful to know what plans are in place to mitigate against the compromises that we've had to make on the location.
Thank you. Caroline, you're going to come in please.
Yes, of course, happy to. So this Assisted Living Leeds is an equipment provision, so at the moment, people find it very difficult to get to the site that we're using. This new site is actually a little bit more accessible, and the intention is to have part of the site used where people could drop in to look at and check out different equipment, to test it out, to see if it suits their needs. So actually, the new site is much more accessible than the previous site, which couldn't host people visiting at all.
Thank you Caroline. Are there any more comments on this paper? No. Really good project, I look forward to it moving ahead. And with that, I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 81 and 82, I take it everybody is happy with those, that's great, thank you. On to councillor Hayden's papers, and item 10 please.
Thank you Chair. This is the annual report of our fostering service, which is produced as a statutory requirement and updates on the fantastic work of our fostering service. The service plays a crucial role in supporting Leeds City Council's foster and kinship carers, including over 400 fostering placements and 350 children living with kinship or connected carers across Leeds. We know that our children looked after do best when living in family settings, and the report highlights a continuing need to increase our number, the number of our foster carers, which will also reduce the use of costly independent fostering agencies. The report covers the, the wide range of work around recruitment, enrichment and support for foster and kinship carers. I particularly like to highlight the ongoing work to engage the third sector, sport organisations, education partners and our own council departments to maximise recruitment opportunities. Also, there are ambitious plans to enhance our fostering services through the development of making connections, building futures foster carers, with the recruitment of professionals who have work, experience of working with children and young people, in order to bring young people living in external residential placements outside of Leeds back to the city, back to live with foster carers in Leeds where they can access safe and stable support. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of our foster carers, whatever type of foster carer they are, and including our kinship carers, for the incredible and hard work that they do in supporting our children and young people in the city. Just a, just a huge thank you to them and to the service who support them year-round and every day for that year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, would you like to come in please?
Yeah, just briefly Chair, yeah, well, I would endorse that from councillor Hayden, and also add my thanks to all those who foster, including those around the table, who, it is a very, very worthwhile thing to do. Encourage anybody who doesn't to get in touch with the council and inquire about it. The, it is far better outcomes for children and young people when they're in a stable foster placement than some of the alternatives, with the happy coincidence that it also is a lot cheaper to the taxpayer. But the key thing is the outcomes, and the more people we've got fostering, and considering adoption where it's appropriate, is, is all to the good, and we should be doing everything to get behind that, I'd certainly do so. Welcome the report, Chair.
Thank you councillor Lam. I will turn to the recommendations on page 95, I take it, everybody is happy with those, that's great, thank you. We'll move on to item 11 please.
Thank you leader. This is the determination of school admission arrangements for 2026, 2027. This is an annually published report, which is a statutory requirement. It sets out the council's admission arrangements for 2026 for all Leeds community and voluntary controlled maintained schools, to ensure places are allocated in a fair and transparent way. The, the only change to note relates to a primary school arrangement at Greenside Primary School, which include a reduction in the published admission, admission number from 45 to 30 places, and reflects the falling birth rate in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lam please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. The, the one thing that surprised me in the paper was that there's no mention of the proposed closure of Queen's Way Primary in Geisley. And what, what I would just like to understand is, is the impact of that potential closure included in the admission arrangements for, for that area, or is that to be factored in? Because I'm also, I've been getting, I'm sure lots of you have, lots of emails from residents in that part of the world, and been copied into responses from ward members, and one of the ward members' responses seemed to be giving a lot of hope to residents that no decision has been made yet. There's every chance it could, the decision could be reversed again, as it was the last time. So I'm just trying to understand what the impact is on the numbers, and if that ward member is right to give that level of hope, because the briefing I had from the- Because the briefing I had from the deputy director gave the impression that the decision is pretty much made and the consultations are formality. So it would be useful to know which it is and whether that's factored into the numbers in this paper.
Thank you. councillor Hayden, and I can see Dan wants to come in.
The consultation on Queen's Way has just closed. A report will be written. No decision has been made as yet. I'll ask Dan to come in.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely the case. So there, there has been no decision made. The consultation is a process that's set out legally and there, there absolutely is no decision that's been made and we cannot preclude the outcome of the consultation. I'm very, very clear on that and have been all along. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lam, please.
So, thank you. I'm grateful for that clarification. That, that was my understanding. But does that mean that that decision isn't factored into this paper?
Hi. The schools local to Queen's Way are all, all own admitting authorities. So they're required to determine their admissions arrangements for twenty six, twenty seven themselves. To our knowledge, none of them have consulted on any changes, but in determining our admission arrangements, there are no changes that we're proposing based on any future decision around Queen's Way because we don't have those schools within our responsibility for determining.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment on this paper, please? I don't see anybody else, so I'll turn to the recommendations on hundred, page hundred and twenty nine. And I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations. That's great. Thank you. We are on to the papers in my portfolio, which is the budget papers, which will go to February full council customarily. We discuss, we agree at this meeting to pass them on to February full council and that's where the main discussion is had. So I shall continue that tradition from my, and from my point of view and not say much more in the introduction of them. Councillor Lam, you've got anything you want to add at this point, please?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's always worth saying for, for the millions who will be watching at home to, to understand why we're not seeing a great deal at this stage, but and for Gerrard's benefit on both twelve A, B and C. From the opposition point of view, we've only had the final budget for a week. We're still going through, looking at what changes we would propose to it. And so the tradition, which I will stick to, is that we set that out in the budget council meeting later in the month. I would just like to ask one question of clarification on the papers, if that's okay. So the government committed in the budget when they unexpectedly increased national insurance contributions and lowers the thresholds that they would fully fund the public sector for the increased costs they would face. So the question's in two parts. Can you confirm that they have done that for Leeds? And also can you confirm what the potential financial impact is of that increase on our third sector partners, people that we commission, given that they don't have the same privilege of having their costs covered? What, what are we expecting to see in the budget now we've got the final settlement?
Thank you. Victoria, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, the announcement around the final settlement was that we did get an additional grant called the recovery grant, which was for twenty million. We did assume that we would get four point nine percent in the budget already from the, the previous services grant. We have used that recovery grant to fund any shortfall in the national insurance contributions. And when we've had a look at the difference between what we estimate the cost to be and what we actually have been compensated for, there is a three point nine million difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Councillor Lam, please.
Sorry, just a second for the benefit of our, our viewers at home. That's a three point nine million shortfall that we've, the, the government have shortchanged us by three point nine million pounds.
I can think about some of the reductions it's had in the past, but we'll take, we'll save that for February, we'll save that for February full council. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations for items twelve A, twelve B and twelve C. Councillor Lam, I assume you're going to reserve your position at this point. Thank you. So I assume everybody else is happy with that. That's great. Thank you. And we'll move on to your portfolio, please councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Leader. And having disposed of the items on next year's budget, we'll look at the current year's position and the usual iteration of the financial monitoring account, which we're now on month nine of. And you will see from the report that we now note in a, a projected overspend of six point eight million at the end of the year. You'll see that that has been coming down as we use movements within the accounts to ensure that at the end of the year that we meet a balanced position. So through either use of reserves or through other mitigating factors. The report, however, does set out all the current positions of the directorates, any overspends, any balances and any underspends that's within the report for now. I don't think there's much more that I need to update on. I would just like to say that the budget action plans also have been worked on for this current year. And we are anticipating around seventy million pounds worth of, of achievement of those budget action plans. Which is extremely good in the current level of demand for service. So I'll leave it there now, Leader.
Thank you. councillor Lam, please.
Yep, you can probably already just about predict the question, I would think, because I seem to ask it every, every time. Obviously, the, the gap has closed due to the use of reserves. The, the biggest pressures are in children's and adults, as we know. The concern is the direction of travel would suggest that they're still going to be running significant deficits going into the next financial year. The question, would officers agree with me that that, that is a reasonable concern to have? That it doesn't seem like we're going to get from a twenty and a half million pound overspend in month nine of this year to being in a, a balanced position at the start of next year, which means next year's budget is already under massive pressure.
Thank you. Victoria, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. What I would say, and we've said this a number of executive boards, is that we've put over fifty million into the adults and children's directorates to note that the additional demand pressures that those services are experiencing and the inflationary pressures. We are monitoring the position very closely and looking at where demand currently is to what we have assumed in the budget. And there are a number of savings proposals, both in adults and children's and the other directorates to manage that position next year. It will be key as we go into the year that we do deliver those savings programmes and that's what we will be monitoring very, very closely. We have recognised that there are still pressures coming through and that that is why that we are proposing to full council that we do make an allocation to the strategic contingency reserve and the social care reserve, which is what is recommended as best practice. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Cooper, please.
Yeah, just to add to what Victoria said there as well, in setting the budget for next year, we've already increased, increased it by the amount of pressure that we had coming into this year from, from children and families as well. So, so hopefully that will help to, to keep the, the spending that's needed for, you know, very vulnerable children that need assistance of children's services to, for them to be looked after appropriately. You know, hopefully that will release on some of the, the pressure of that. But that's already been added into the budget for next year.
Thank you. If there's no more comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page six hundred and seventy two. I take it everybody is happy with those. Thank you. If we move on to item fourteen, please.
Yes, again, thank you, Leader. This is an annual report that I'm bringing to executive board today on the capital receipt programme. And so the total value of the programme is a hundred and six million and we are expecting to achieve thirty six point five million pounds worth of receipts by the end of the current financial year. The report does have a, a list of, of properties that have been added to the capital receipt disposal list and, and also some information about properties that we've, community centres that we've done community asset transfers on or that we're proposed, that are suitable for that as well. So it goes into some detail about the various buildings that we've got in the city and how we propose to deal with them. I suppose it's really worthwhile me saying actually that the, the estate that the council holds is really too large for what we need as an organisation, for, for what we need to use and it is not as affordable. So all those properties in the localities are being reviewed and will continue to be reviewed. Each of them on an individual basis and working with local ward members at the same time. And further reports on that will be brought to executive board as and when we need to move to that. I think it's also important to say we've had some, some really good successes in terms of how we've disposed of some buildings and some buildings are suitable for a, an auction disposal. And we've also had some, some really good successes in, in that sphere. Either they have met the target that we've expected or they've exceeded it by quite some way in some individual instances as well. So we intend to continue with that measure of method of disposal as well as and when it's appropriate. But of course, there's also other appropriate measures of disposing of our buildings too. But I'll bring further information around the locality review in time. Thanks, Leader.
Thank you councillor Cooper. councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. And for, I'll say it adds for, for similar reasons to the item twelve items, I'm going to reserve my position on this one. But just a couple of questions, because I think actually the working with communities, local members, parish councils and others on this stuff is really, really important. A lot of these assets came into our ownership in different ways. Some of them were inherited from pre nineteen seventy four reorganisations and things like that. And it's, it's not our job to be a property magnate. It's to have the things that we need to deliver services and for the community. So my, my one question is just to ask for an assurance that where things have either been identified for sale, for capital receipt or for a community asset transfer, for an absolute assurance that ward members have been thoroughly consulted up to this point and are comfortable and happy with the proposals that have been brought forward.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Thank you, Leader. Mark Mills, interim chief officer, asset management and regeneration. Yes, I mean, so, so all ward members have been made aware of the, it's broadly land that is being added to the programme this time round. And there's certainly big conversations taking place around the proposed community asset transfer properties. We, we will continue to work with ward members as we are with yourself, councillor Lam, around whether be assets as we move forward to, to identify the right solutions. But I think, you know, it's acknowledging that our estate is too large. So we do need to accelerate the pace at which we're able to release properties.
Thank you. If there's no more comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendation on page seven hundred and twenty three. Councillor Lam, you're reserving your position on this. So I take it everybody else on the board is happy with this paper. Thank you. We'll move on to the last paper councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Leader. And, and the final paper is for asking executive board for the agreement for a less than best lease for the development of Old Coburn Sports Hall. This is a pretty unique circumstances insofar as we, we already had a community asset transfer lease for Hamara in twenty sixteen for the Old Coburn Sports Hall. And Hamara have managed it since that time. The building was really well used by the community and by a, a really wide area, geographical area that delivered sports facilities and sessions around that time. But then Covid hit and they were unable to use the space quite as effectively as, as they'd hoped. The building is kind of, have come to its end of its natural lifespan really. And Hamara have secured a planning consent for a scheme which would see the demolishing of this building and the redevelopment of a new two storey building, which would provide a real estate of the art multi-use space for service delivery and community activities in an area of Leeds that's, that's got high demands and needs and suffers from a lot of inequalities and would be a priority in terms of some of the work and the delivery that we do as a, as a council as well. So to see Hamara proposing this really would see some of that work that we'd want to see doing happen in that area of the city. There is a pink paper on this that talks about the financial side of things. But suffice to say that we would be looking for a termination of the current lease that we've got, the permission for demolishing the building and the setting up of a, of a new lease with some security around how we do that as an organisation. I'll leave it there for now, Leader.
Thank you councillor Cooper. councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. I'll start with two confessions on this one. First of all, I'm not terribly familiar with this centre. From reading what they do and how they do, it's very, very impressive. But my second confession is that I didn't read the papers until quite late last night. I started, just this particular one, I started reading them over the weekend. I'd lost the will to live on about page five hundred of the, the budget papers. And I'm sure anyone who's actually read the papers and went through will know exactly what I mean when my, my eyes had gone at that point. Yeah, I think, any, anyone who doesn't know, I know hasn't read the papers. So I read it late. I was briefed as part of four items in thirty minutes yesterday afternoon. It all seemed very straightforward. And the aims and objectives were laudable. And then I started to look at the detail and got more and more and more concerned about it and wished I'd had more time to be briefed. And I have to, I mean, it sets out clearly in the report, there is significant risk to the council. And I, I have sat here in recent times and made a similar warning and been told I was wrong, nothing to worry about. And it turns out, as councillor Prior knows, I was right to be concerned about the risk and everyone ignored me. And we're in a position now where the council's on the hook for a lot of money. And my proposal on this paper is actually that we defer it for a month because I don't think there's enough information and detail. As I, I'm happy to raise my concerns in the pink paper section. All I would say is we're going to be here for a long time if I do, because there's a lot of questions. And I don't think, I, I'm not sure anyone's going to be able to reassure me in this session about the level of risk to the council and what we're potentially on the hook for if this was to go wrong. There's a lot of questions about the numbers that I can't really talk about now in this session. So I'm, I don't want to say, no, I'm against it, but I really don't feel it would be responsible with the information that's available, with the level of briefings to say, yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and support it. And so I'd, I'd like you to consider perhaps giving it another month. So certainly I and potentially other people can get properly briefed. Others, others may have had more time on it than I have. But I just have some serious concerns. I'd like some reassurance about.
Okay, I'll ask, obviously clearly we've got the pink paper, which we discuss not in the in the public session. Whether Mark Angela want to come in, in the public session on comments that could be made here, please? Mark, please.
Okay, thank you. So I think, as councillor Lam notes, there is a degree of risk, and we've set that out in the paper. I think we have broadly come up with a range of mitigation measures to address the risks as we see them. And I think one of the key recommendations in the report is about establishing an escrow account to allow the charity to be able to deposit money in that account that they're committing to the project. And in doing so, obviously, that's their form of commitment alongside the grant funding which is set out in the pink papers. I think in terms of moving the project forward, it has got planning consent. It has, the organisation, Hamara, have done a lot of work on fundraising so far. And I think what they're, we're in a chicken and egg position whereby they have a number of other grant funding opportunities that they're unable to take forward until the council has shown its commitment to a scheme. I think it's right to note that there's risks there, though. And I think, you know, from my perspective, we would continue as officers to work through those risks and protect the council's interests as we move forward. Clearly, your request about deferring is something for others, but certainly from my perspective, we acknowledge those risks that you're probably alluding to in your comments.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Cooper.
Yes, I think actually that this paper has taken some time to bring to executive board as well, I think it's fair to say that. And Hamara have been working with asset management for a considerable amount of time now. And if we deferred the paper, I think it could have some impact on their ability to raise further funds for this project as well. What I'd suggest that we do is perhaps move into the, when we move into the confidential discussion of the pink items, if we can satisfy some of the questions that you have within that, then we will discuss then further about, you know, whether we need a further paper at executive board to discuss this any further. Chair, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, thank you. And I think, again, as you've said and Mark Mills has said, the risks are recognised in the report. The building, the site, I'm also mindful the site is already in the control of Hamara and will be for a number of years ahead. This isn't a site that is currently in the control of the council at the moment. So I don't think we should defer this paper. I do think we, you know, will obviously listen to anything that's said in the pink papers and the discussion around the pink papers, which is where we discuss the commercial things. But I, like I said, I mean, I know your concerns, councillor Lam, and again, the risks are recognised in the report. But I think we should agree the paper here, have that discussion, then move forward from there.
Should we not at least have the private discussion before a decision's made?
Gerrard, please.
I defer it to Catherine, really, but I think if the board want to resolve something different to what's in the recommendations...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you need to have the discussion in the pink session before you actually resolve and make that decision.
Okay. Sound advice, thank you. So what I suggest we do is close the public part of the meeting for now and move into the discussion on the pink papers, and then we'll come back into public meeting for the resolve section. Thank you. So with that, like I say, I'll close the, or close the public part of the meeting for now. Thank you.